We're ready. Let's stand for a pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Counselor Jones.
Here.
Counselor Geisler.
Here.
Counselor Jelly.
Here.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Here.
Mayor Boucher.
Here. Announcements? Do any counselors have announcements this evening? I've got one. The Pillars right across the road here is having their grand opening on Wednesday, June 12th from three thirty to six P M. A public hearing. We have a public hearing this evening on proving tax abatement for certain property located in the city of Hermanton. Mr. Mulder?
So we are proposing that we want to pay the taxes on several properties in order to finance the debt for a portion of the Victor Park. We do this for really two reasons. One is it gives us the legal authority to issue the debt. If we can do that through abatement bond, and but then we will then cancel that abatement and pay off those the bond using just other sources. So we'll cancel the abatement, but this gives us the legal authority to do it towards the bank that we have the legal authority to do it. And then we cancel those and we'll use other funding sources to fund that gap.
Thank you. During this public hearing, there's public discussion on this item only. Does anyone wish to address the council at this time? Does anyone wish to address the council about the resolution approving property tax abatement for certain property? Is there any public input on this resolution or this proposal? Hearing none. Next on our agenda, we have two thousand twenty-four dash seven-two, resolution approving property tax abatement for certain property located in the city of Hermanton. Do we have a motion relating to this?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Counselor Jelly to approve. Is there a second? Second by Counselor Jones by a hair? Any comments from counsel? Roll call, please.
Counselor Geisler.
Hi.
Counselor Jelly.
Hi.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Hi.
Counselor Jones.
Hi.
Mayor Boucher.
Hi. Next, we have communications listed, but none outlined in the fire in our minutes. Mr. Mulder, we did not have the digital permitting implementation presentation, but we had a short one on Maple Grove Stormwater. Could you give us a short explanation?
Sure. The Maple Grove Stormwater presentation had to do with a concern by a resident on Maple Grove Road west of Midway regarding runoff, particularly as it related to the Jenny Farms subdivision. We reviewed kind of a little bit of history on that, and then the idea there is that the runoff from that subdivision mostly wants to go will flow along the new road into a culvert and then either to to one of two retaining ponds. So the drainage from that subdivision should not be flowing west to the person that was concerned about that on Maple Grove Road.
Thank you. Uh, next, we have public discussion. This is a time for individuals to address the council about any item not on the agenda. We ask that you limit your time to three minutes per person. If you are here for a specific agenda item, there will be public discussion available during the presentation of that item. Is there any general public discussion this evening? Any public discussion for the city council this evening? Is there any public discussion for I any item not on the agenda? We will close the public discussion and move to the consent agenda. That is minutes approval or correction of the May twentieth, twenty twenty-four city council continuation minutes. And accounts payable approved general city warrants from May sixteenth, twenty twenty-four through May thirty-first, twenty twenty-four in the amount of six hundred twenty-five thousand, seven hundred seventy-one dollars and fifty-six cents. Is there a motion? Motion by Counselor Geisler to approve. Is there a second? Second by Counselor Jones. Roll call, please.
Counselor Jones.
Hi.
Counselor Geisler. Counselor Jelly.
Hi.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Hi.
Mayor Boucher.
Hi. Ordinances, we have a second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero-seven. An ordinance amending Hermanton Code of Ordinances by amending section eight fifty point five, particular speed limits designated. Is there a motion relating to this ordinance?
Motion to deny.
Motion by Counselor LeBlanc to deny. Is there a second? Second by Counselor Jones. Mr. Mulder?
The staff had proposed that the speed limit on Hermanton Road from Midway to Highway Two be increased from thirty to forty miles per hour. Um, we did that in part because there was just to be consistent on Hermanton Road to be at forty miles an hour. Um, for some reason, that stretch is only thirty, um, which we had recommended that that be forty miles an hour.
Thank you. Is there any comments by counsel?
I guess I'll just comment that hearing of what some of the residents had said about the concern for changing the speed and kind of my decision to want to keep it at thirty miles an hour.
Same support from the people who live on that stretch wanting it to stay thirty. I don't see a reason why we would need to change it.
Anything over here, gentlemen?
I don't want it to sound like an echo in here.
Thank you. I uh, I don't think there's any harm in leaving it as is. If there ever is a need in the future, it could be revisited and public input would be sought and desired at that time. I think that leaving it thirty would make it less attractive as a pass through to and from Highway Two, which would be one benefit for the neighborhood. Anything else from counsel? Is there any public input on this ordinance at this time? If so, please step forward and state your name and address for the record.
My name is David Thornton, fifty-eight sixty-one Hermanton Road. I appreciate your, as a consul, considering the the many emails you probably got about this issue. The reason why it was thirty miles an hour is I think thirty-five or forty years ago, Warren Burg is one of the early council members, was instrumental in establishing that speed limit. Due to the population being younger, I think there was a special needs individual that lived near the Midway Road. I live in a downside of the hill that approaches as a as the road approaches Highway Two. I had four boys raised in that area. Young kids. Uh, we were concerned about a time very grateful that it was thirty miles an hour. Currently, there are three or there are two families with young kids right near the intersection of Midway and Hermanton Road on that section. And they are appreciative of having this still stay thirty. I went through last night and I think how the sixteen people that live on that section, fourteen people I did talk to and give them the information about contacting you folks. Every one of them said they didn't want to change it. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Is there any other public input on this ordinance? Any public input on the motion to vote down ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero-seven? Like a reminder to counsel that if you are voting to vote this down, vote in the affirmative. If not, vote the negative. Roll call, please.
Counselor Jones.
Hi.
Counselor Geisler.
Hi.
Counselor Jelly.
Hi.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Hi.
Mayor Boucher.
Hi. Next is resolutions. Resolution two thousand twenty-four dash seventy-three. Resolution awarding contract for flooring repairs in the amount of seventeen thousand, nine hundred thirty-eight dollars plus applicable taxes and fees. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Counselor Geisler. Is there a second? Second by Counselor Jones. Mr. Mulder?
This is a capital improvement project in our police department to repair the floor in the garage, the hallway, and the break room. This was part of our capital improvement plan for twenty twenty-four.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from counsel?
Off the top of your head, do you remember what was in the budget?
Off the top of my head, no. I won't. For some reason, I was thinking it was twenty-something, but I don't know that for sure.
I think you're right.
If you give me a minute, I can look it up if you really want to know.
No, that's.
Anything else from counsel? Any public input on this resolution? Any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-four dash seventy-three? Anyone online, Joe? Thank you. Last opportunity for public input on the resolution toward contract for flooring repairs. Roll call, please.
Counselor Jelly.
Hi.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Hi.
Counselor Jones.
Hi.
Counselor Geisler.
Hi.
Mayor Boucher.
Hi. Resolution two thousand twenty-four dash seven-four. Resolution approving final planned unit development for Stebner Road Development. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion by Counselor Jones, second by Counselor Jelly, Mr. Mulder.
Good job, Mr. Johnson, applying this resolution.
Great. Thank you very much. Uh, this evening, as you'd mentioned, is a final planned unit development application by Jay Zerden slash BMAX. Uh, this is an existing ten acre site that has access off of Stebner Road. Uh, the property is owned R three residential. Now, these planned unit developments are allowed in any zoning district throughout the city. Uh, plenty of developments allow for the setting of site-specific lot sizes as well as setbacks associated with that proposed development. What we're essentially looking at this evening is a conservation subdivision. They're clustering of these ten two-family home buildings. There'd be twenty units total. Uh, so the underlying math associated with that is two units per acre. The R three zoning, uh, which this is part of identifies two units per acre. So there's no net change in density as far as this planned unit development. Just by clustering these units together, we're able to save three point three acres of wetland within this property. Uh, the road will, or excuse me, the development will be serviced by a sixty-six foot public right-of-way, which have a twenty-eight foot curb and gutter roadway surface as well as a five-foot wide sidewalk. Uh, the water and sewer is going to come from Stebner Road, and there's one proposed stormwater basin on the property which will handle the needs for this development. Uh, as part of the public amenity, there will be two pickleball courts going to be located more in the east end of this property. And then lastly, these buildings are very similar in size and style to the existing two-family units that are constructed at Hands Road and Morris Thomas Road that the developer had put in about five or so years ago.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from counsel? Is there any public input on this resolution? Any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-four dash seven-four? Any public input on the resolution approving the final planned unit development for Stebner Road Development? Roll call, please.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Hi.
Counselor Jones.
Hi.
Counselor Geisler.
Hi.
Counselor Jelly.
Hi.
Mayor Boucher.
Hi. Resolution two thousand twenty-four dash seven-five, resolution approving a special use permit for grading and filling within a recreational environment shoreline overlay area. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion by Counselor LeBlanc is there a second? Second by Counselor Geisler. Mr. Mulders? Do we have Eric to channel this one also?
Sure.
Mr. Johnson?
Great. Thank you again. Uh, this special use permit is associated with the Hermanton Arena Expansion Project. Uh, this lot is about half or the eastern portion of the property is located within this recreational district. Uh, there is a small, basically channelized stream on the east side of Uggstead Road. So once again, the portion of this property is within the shoreline. Uh, the new work is primarily outside of the shoreline, but there is a potential of having some uh, small grading areas, maybe stockpiling materials within the shoreline area. So, uh, the city is going to issue the special use permit, just like we would any other project, uh, whether it's private or public throughout the city.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from counsel?
Does this cover Haha if they want to add an extra outdoor rink?
Uh, they actually went through this out last year, the special use permit for the construction. At that time, they were hoping to get some, um, basically road material from the Uggstead Road. So that's why it went through at that time. So that one is still active. So they'll they'll be fine that way as well.
Any other questions or comments from counsel? Is there any public input on this resolution? Any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-four dash seven-five? Any public input on the resolution approving a special you use permit for grading and filling in a shoreline, a recreational environment shoreline overlay area? Roll call, please.
Counselor Geisler.
Hi.
Counselor Jelly.
Hi.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Hi.
Counselor Jones.
Hi.
Mayor Boucher.
Hi. Next is resolution two thousand twenty-four dash seven-six, resolution approving a special use permit for construction of a two-family home within a recreational shoreline area. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Counselor Geisler. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Jones. Mr. Mulder, do we want Mr. Johnson to do?
One more time, Eric.
Thank you again. So this is a special use permit. Uh, there's an existing, uh, basically two-plus acre lot at the end of Misty Morning Drive. Uh, the applicant, uh, who's will be the owner of the the two-family structure is looking to administratively subdivide this property for this new, um, structure. Uh, the proposed lot will be one point one four acres in size, uh, which meets the minimum one acre requirement for two-family structures. As I mentioned, it will be split to accommodate that building. Uh, it will, all the setbacks associated with this, uh, will meet the underlying R three requirements that allow for two-family structures with a special use permit.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from counsel?
I think I said my piece already, so.
I had one question, um, with two acres and two homes. Does that fit with density requirements of R three?
Yes, it does. So, um, with the two-plus acres, you could have four homes associated with that, just with each one being a minimum of a half acre in size. So at the end of the day, we're looking at three structures associated with it. So we actually are under the proposed, the density allowed for that zoning district.
Thank you.
Just one clarification for me moving forward. Is the special use to build a twin home in an R three area? So you need to have a special use permit to build this type of structure in that zoning?
That is correct.
Okay.
Anything else from counsel?
And just for clarification, there was a public hearing at the planning and zoning on that matter.
Yes, there was. There were no members of the public. We spoke to it.
Okay, thank you.
If if we're okay with this type of home being built over there, why wouldn't we just rezone it to a different zoning?
I think we made the zoning regulations be planned unit developments so that it would open up public input for each individual one. Uh, there was a question at one time about twin homes, group homes being located next to each other, and uh, we didn't want to come up with a, say, a half a mile stretch of road where everyone was a twin home. So we made it a planned use, uh, subject to a permit versus part of the zoning ordinance. That's the history of my time on the council.
Like I said, struggle with that rationale because the next person comes in and applies for the same permit. We say no because there's already one next to it.
Not necessarily. Uh, that allows the public input to bring that up. We didn't flat ban them.
Yeah.
We just allowed for the public to have input each time it happens. Anything else from counsel? Anyone from the public wish to comment on this resolution? Is there any public comment on resolution two thousand twenty-four dash seven-six? Any public comment on the resolution approving a special use permit? Roll call, please.
Counselor Geisler.
Hi.
Counselor Jelly.
Hi.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Hi.
Counselor Jones.
Hi.
Mayor Boucher.
Hi. Next is resolution two thousand twenty-four dash seven-seven. Resolution approving pay request number one for road improvement district number five forty-one to Northland Instructors in the amount of two hundred thirty thousand, eighteen dollars and fifty-one cents. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Counselor Jelly to approve. Do we have a second? Second by Counselor Jones. Mr. Mulder?
So this is the work that has been done to date on Hermanton Road and on the bridge. And we're withholding, uh, a five percent on both of those projects.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from counsel?
Is that going to get opened back up to traffic, one lane traffic, when they actually start building the road, or is that going to remain closed until they're done? I guess I just what what's the status?
It's closed. It's closed for through traffic, but it's open for local.
Yeah, because you got to go different directions off the bridge, right?
Yeah, and the bridge is going to be gone.
Yeah.
So there's not going to be a one-lane bridge at any point in time.
Yeah, okay, maybe I misunderstood the order of operations there, but.
Is there a different date for the bridge being replaced and usable and the end of the construction on the whole road?
I don't know that answer.
Okay, something we can ask our engineer.
I would doubt it, but I don't know that answer.
The bridge takes longer and has started first. And they're trying to get back to completion as possible.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from counsel? Is there any public input on this resolution? Is there any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-four dash seven-seven?
Mayor, one other comment I want to make is, um, on the agenda, it says two hundred and thirty thousand eighteen, but the title of the resolution says two fifty-nine oh sixty-three. It should be two, it's two fifty-nine. Um, two thirty is what's being on the road. There's only just a twenty-nine thousand that's on the bridge. So.
Two fifty-nine.
Hang on a second. Six, two hundred and fifty-nine thousand, sixty-three dollars and thirty-four cents. Two five nine oh six three thirty-four.
Well, we'll ask Counselor Jelly if he's willing to amend his motion.
Yes.
To cover that amount. And Counselor Jones, if you're willing to amend your second. And, uh, we won't go through the comment period again. But we will ask for public comment on this resolution for a second time. And for the last time, public comment on resolution two thousand twenty-four dash seven-seven. Roll call, please.
Counselor Jelly.
Hi.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Hi.
Counselor Jones.
Hi.
Counselor Geisler.
Hi.
Mayor Boucher.
Hi. Next is resolution two thousand twenty-four dash seven-eight. Resolution authorizing Kraus and Ojard to proceed with construction of Ice Arena. Do we have a motion?
Second.
Motion by Counselor Jones and second by Counselor Geisler to approve. Is there any questions or comments from counsel?
I'll just say it's a big monumental step here, what we're doing. It's been a lot of hard work and a lot of, uh, effort gone into this. So thanks, everybody, for the work thus far, and looking forward to seeing it come, uh, come to a reality here in a year and a half.
Mr. Mulder, is there anything we need from you to add to this?
No, I just would point out is that, um, the purpose of doing this is because, um, we have, we have bid from bid package one, and before we award those, we need to give K A permission to proceed, um, given particularly given the fact that we do not have the guaranteed maximum price yet, and we won't have that until we have the second bid package come through. Um, but we don't want to wait for that because we want to keep this project on schedule. We want to award these contracts so that we can order the material and get started on, um, some of the the work that, um, can be done at this point.
Thank you. Any other comment from counsel? Is there any public comment on this resolution? Any public comment on resolution two thousand twenty-four dash seven-eight? Any public comment on the resolution authorizing Carl's Anderson to proceed with the construction of an ice arena? Roll call, please.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Hi.
Counselor Jones.
Hi.
Counselor Geisler.
Hi.
Counselor Jelly.
Hi.
Mayor Boucher.
Hi. And I'll start off by saying the next eleven resolutions are going to be very similar. Mr. Mulder, are you okay with giving an explanation at the first one and us just rolling through the rest as we are able?
Yeah, so, um, what we have in the next eleven resolutions are eleven different, um, awards of contracts for different scopes of material, um, scopes of, uh, construction. Um, so some of it is, um, in some cases, it's labor and material. In a couple of places, it's just material. Um, but each one of those represents a individual scope as part of that building project. For example, selective demolition is one, concrete, um, structural pre-cast, precast, architectural precast. So each one of those different, uh, scopes of work will be awarded to a different contractor, um, and we want to proceed with those.
Thank you. We will start with resolution two thousand twenty-four dash seven-nine, resolution receiving bids and approving award of contracts for the North Star Arena and assigning contracts to the construction manager, selective demolition scope two A. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion by Counselor LeBlanc is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Jones. Is there any questions or comments from counsel? Is there any public input on this resolution? Is there any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-four dash seven-nine? Any public input on resolution for selective demolition? Roll call, please.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Hi.
Counselor Jones.
Hi.
Counselor Geisler.
Hi.
Counselor Jelly.
Hi.
Mayor Boucher.
Hi. Resolution two thousand twenty-four dash eight-zero, resolution receiving bids and approving award of contracts for the North Star Arena and assigning contracts to the construction manager, concrete scope zero three A. Do we have a motion? Motion to approve by Counselor Jones. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Jelly. Any input from counsel? Hearing none. Is there any public input on this resolution? Is there any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-four dash eight-zero? Any public input on resolution awarding the contract for concrete work? Roll call, please.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Hi.
Counselor Jones.
Hi.
Counselor Geisler.
Hi.
Counselor Jelly.
Hi.
Mayor Boucher.
Hi. Resolution two thousand twenty-four dash eight-one, resolution receiving bids and awarding and approving award of contracts for the North Star Arena and assigning contracts to constructing, construction manager, structural precast scope zero three B. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion by Counselor Geisler. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Jones. Any comments from counsel? Any public input on this resolution? Any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-four dash eight-one? Any public input on the award of the contract for structural precast? Roll call, please.
Counselor Jones.
Hi.
Counselor Geisler.
Hi.
Counselor Jelly.
Hi.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Hi.
Mayor Boucher.
Hi. Resolution two thousand twenty-four dash eight-two. Resolution receiving bids and approving award of contracts for the North Star Arena and assigning contracts to the construction manager for architectural precast. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Counselor Jelly. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor LeBlanc. Any questions from counsel or comments? Hearing none. Is there any public input on this resolution? Any public input on resolution twenty twenty-four dash eight-two? No hands raised? Any public input on the resolution assigning the contact, contract or architectural precast? Roll call, please.
Counselor Jones. Counselor Geisler.
Hi.
Counselor Jelly.
Hi.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Hi.
Mayor Boucher.
Hi. Four down. Six to go. Seven to go. Resolution two thousand twenty-four dash eight-three, resolution receiving bids and approving award of contracts for the North Star Arena and assigning contracts to construction manager. This would be steel supply. to construction manager. This would be steel supply scope zero five A. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Counsel Jones, second by Counsel Geisler. Any comments from counsel? Is there any public input on this resolution? Any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-four dash eight-three? Any public input awarding the contract for steel supply? Roll call, please.
Counsel Jelly?
Aye.
Counsel LeBlanc?
Aye.
Counsel Jones?
Aye.
Counsel Geisler?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Resolution twenty-two-four dash eight-four.
Resolution receiving bids and approving award of contracts for the North Star Arena and assigning contracts to the construction manager, masonry scope zero four A. Do we have a motion? Motion to approve by Counsel Jones. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel LeBlanc. Any comments from counsel? Any public input on this resolution? Any public input on resolution twenty-two-four dash eight-four? Any public input on the resolution assigning a contract for masonry work? Roll call, please.
Counsel LeBlanc?
Aye.
Counsel Jones?
Aye.
Counsel Geisler?
Aye.
Counsel Jelly?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye.
Resolution twenty-two-four dash eight-five, resolution receiving bids and approving award of contracts for the North Star Arena and assigning contracts to the construction manager. This is steel erection scope zero five B. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion by Counsel Geisler to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel LeBlanc. Any comments from counsel? Any public input on this resolution? Any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-four dash eight-five? Any public input on the resolution assigning the contract for steel erection? Roll call, please.
Counsel Geisler?
Aye.
Counsel Jelly?
Aye.
Counsel LeBlanc?
Aye.
Counsel Jones?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye.
Next is resolution two thousand twenty-four dash eight-six. Resolution receiving bids and approving award of contracts for the North Star Arena and assigning contracts to the construction manager, foundation waterproofing scope zero seven eight. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Counsel LeBlanc, there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Jelly. Any comments from counsel? Any public input on this resolution? Any public input on resolution twenty-two-four dash eight-six? Any public input on the resolution to assign the contract for foundation waterproofing? Roll call, please.
Counsel Geisler?
Aye.
Counsel Jelly?
Aye.
Counsel LeBlanc?
Aye.
Counsel Jones?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Resolution two thousand twenty-four dash eight-seven.
Resolution receiving bids and approving award of contracts for the North Star Arena and assigning contracts to the construction manager for mechanical equipment. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Counsel Geisler. Is there a second? Second by Counsel Jones. Any questions or comments from counsel? Any public input on this resolution? Any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-four dash eight-seven? Any public input on the resolution assigning contracts for mechanical equipment? Roll call, please.
Counsel LeBlanc?
Aye.
Counsel Jones?
Aye.
Counsel Geisler?
Aye.
Counsel Jelly?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Resolution two thousand twenty-four dash eight-eight, resolution receiving bids
and approving award of contracts for the North Star Arena and assigning contracts to the construction manager for electrical equipment. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion by Counsel LeBlanc to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Jones. Any questions or comments from counsel? Is there any public input on this resolution? Any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-four dash eight-eight? Any public input on the resolution assigning the contract for electrical equipment? Roll call, please.
Counsel Jones?
Aye.
Counsel Geisler?
Aye.
Counsel Jelly?
Aye.
Counsel LeBlanc?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. And last but not least,
two thousand twenty-four dash eight-nine, resolution receiving bids and approving award of contract for the North Star Arena and assigning contracts to the construction manager for site clearing and earthwork, scope thirty-one A. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Counsel Jones. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel LeBlanc. Any questions or comments from counsel? Any public input on this resolution? Any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-four dash eight-nine? Any public input on the resolution assigning the contract for site clearing and earthwork? Roll call, please.
Counsel Jelly?
Aye.
Counsel LeBlanc?
Aye.
Counsel Jones?
Aye.
Counsel Geisler?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye.
Is there any need for a closed session this evening, Mr. Mulder?
No.
Next, we'd entertain a motion to recess. Do we have a motion?
Move to recess.
Motion by Counsel LeBlanc to recess. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Jelly. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.